Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 11th, 2023 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. We're getting a little bit of a late start. We had a little technical difficulty, so we apologize for that. As usual, I'm going to open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Just a few announcements. I hope everybody had a happy and safe 4th of July. I want to thank our water department because they've sort of been helping me understand sort of a little water issue, you know, that we're having in a particular part of town, and they've just been, both Brendan and Tony have been really, really helpful, so I want to acknowledge that. And Phil, thanks, Phil, that you're in the room. And then I want to thank our fire department because I know that the chief in particular, I know he's been monitoring, you know, what we know is some pretty dangerous flooding in some other communities and keeping an eye on it here, and Bob is going to be giving an update on that at public forum. So Bob's been not only watching it but keeping the board really up to date on things that were happening, so we always appreciate that. Anybody, you have any other announcements?
No, just it's very hot. Make sure you drink a lot of fluids, get air-conditioned if need be, and take care of yourself in this weather.
Yep. Do we have a cooling station, Jerry, if we get to that point? It's the Council on Aging, right?
The Council on Aging.
Okay. No announcements?
No.
Okay, gotcha. So, public forum. Anybody, is anyone else here for public forum? No. Bob, you want to come up? Chief, excuse me, give us a little update on what's happening?
So we've been, myself and part of the DPW have been monitoring the water situation in town over the last 36 hours or so. We did have, Circle Drive is one of those areas that even in a normal rainstorm, sometimes we get some flooding. It did make it to the edge of the roadway. It did not crest over the road. I did receive a few phone calls today about, you know, potential evacuations and so forth. I got on a call first thing this morning with Army Corps of Engineers and MEMA, and it was stated that the water levels were actually starting to recede, and it was not expected to crest at such a high levels what they were thinking about last night. So right now, as 11 o'clock today was the last meeting that we got on, there's expected that it could go up to another additional five feet from where it was at that time. What that translates to Hatfield and the levee is that we should still end up at about five to six feet below the top of the levee. You will see some of the, all the fields are pretty much underwater on the other side of the levee at this point. I drove about 4:30 just to check everything. You can't get down certain roads, Scotland Road, Brook Hollow, to certain points, but other than that, we don't have any major issues. It will not crest over the top of the levee. The impact is going to be between midnight and 2:00 a.m., and they're expecting by mid-morning that they'll also, they'll already start seeing the water receding at that point. We are still monitoring the weather for Thursday evening and into Friday. There's another thunderstorm and rainstorm coming, so depending on if we stay dry for the next 48 hours or so prior to that, we don't expect any major issues. We haven't had to close any major roadways or anything like that. So as of right now, everything is good, and we got an email this afternoon that two of the dams up in Vermont that they thought they were going to have to open up, it won't go more than their spillways, which means it shouldn't impact us very much at all.
Right. I did read that, because originally MEMA came out with an alert about that. Was it MEMA or FEMA?
Correct. It was, well, I got it from Army Corps of Engineers originally.
Corps of Engineers, yeah.
They thought they were going to have to release a significant amount of water out of there, our both dams, and it turns out that they were able to take it down a little bit. So it will go into their spillways, but we shouldn't see any major effect by that release or either of those two releases.
Well, it sounds like we actually got kind of lucky here, that there's a lot of other communities that had really serious problems, so.
Yeah. I know some of the private folks, they had pulled out some of their boats ahead of time. The docks are actually still in place along most of our shoreline that I saw. They're shifted a little bit, but they're all still there, and I don't see a lot of damage to them as of right now, so. But stay off the water. There's been people that were out canoeing and kayaking on the Deerfield River. They had to rescue some folks yesterday afternoon. So public, stay off the waterways everywhere for, you know, the next week or so, because it's going to be moving fast. We don't need that.
And I would assume filled with a lot of debris.
And there is a ton of debris out there right now. There is a lot of trees in the river, so.
Good advice.
Okay.
Good advice. Chief, thanks. We'll talk to you later. Okay, so now we have the approval of some minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June 13th, 2023.
Got to find, yeah. A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve executive session June 13th, 2023, or if we want to hold on that, Marlene?
Yes, we could hold on that. We should.
Yeah, we should hold on that. I rescind that.
Oh, but the minutes are the minutes.
They are. But once they're approved, they become public information, so actually.
No, I thought they stay, executive session stays private, doesn't it, until the matter resolves?
Until the matter is resolved.
I mean, we accept executive session minutes all the time that don't get released because the matter is not resolved.
There have been some prior executive session meeting minutes that we withheld.
I mean, I guess we can hold them, but I don't know why we wouldn't approve them.
I will hold off.
Hold off, okay. Okay, so the first order of business tonight is the transfer of the all-alcoholic license at Hatfield Main Street Market.
Yeah, so Karen and I went back in the previous board meeting. The board actually did vote to.
We did vote. I thought we did.
You did.
And it was just sort of like a contingent upon the transfer.
That was the application submitted to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission for the transfer. So what you have before you now is the actual license, and the board could just go ahead and sign that. So it's not necessary for further vote.
Yeah, I thought, I was pretty sure that we had already voted on that.
You did.
Goodness, there's a lot of stuff in here. So I don't see it in here. There's the other alcohol licensing, the one day, but I don't see, and I didn't have a copy of it in my packet either.
Oh, wait a minute. The license gets signed once A, B, C, C proves the application.
Wait a second, oh, no, this is.
So that has not come back, right? Okay.
So we actually don't have anything we have to do on that.
Right, nothing.
Okay.
You can move on to the next item.
Okay, moving right along. So topic two is a one-day liquor license for an application by David Capriati, the Beer Guy, and that's for July 22nd. Is anybody here to speak to that? No? I mean, it seems pretty straightforward. It's a one-day liquor license. I know we've issued to the Beer Guy before, and it's just in a private event at the pavilion. It looks like, I mean, from what I saw, everything is in order.
He has everything in order, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Dave Capriati, the Beer Guy, at the pavilion from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's what the time of the function is, and the date of the function is July 22nd, 2023, and it appears to be a birthday party.
One second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Karen, on the, this application, this must be just me that signs anywhere, just where it says received?
Yeah, approved.
Oh, approved or denied, so I just.
Go ahead and sign that. That's basic, yes.
Oh, it does, okay. Easy enough. Greg? Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move topic 10 next for the Savard's.
I was going to suggest maybe we take that out of order. They're here, so.
As fascinating as I'm sure you find all of this, we can take this a little bit out of order for you. So we're going to skip ahead to topic 10. Great idea, Ed, and this is a license, class-one dealer's license, a request to transfer the license, correct? Now, I'm not sure who wants to speak to it, but you should probably come up to the microphone so that people at home can hear you.
Drew and Ashley, yeah, speak to it. Drew and Ashley, they're the license holder, or will be.
So, do you want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Ashley Harrison.
I'm Drew Harrison.
Okay, and you are applying to really take over the license, the class-one license that's been at, I mean, Savard's GNS is what I call it. It's really, I don't know what it's actually called now, but, and so this is, I mean, is everything in order, Karen? I'm only seeing the, maybe I have it in here.
We reviewed it yesterday.
Yes, that's right, we did. I don't have any questions. I guess I would just say, you know, thank you to the Savards for running that really successful business out there all those years, and really excited to have you taking over and.
We are too.
Doing business in our town. Oh, yeah, here's everything.
Yes, it's nice to see the business continue.
Yeah, for sure. Yep, appreciate it. So I don't have any questions. It looks, as I said, Karen, it looks like everything's in order, and do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I think it looks good. I looked it over. I'm glad they're staying.
Yeah, for sure. It's a great business, though. We would have hated to lose it.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
You've been working there?
I worked for Gary for 11 years, and I kind of went off and started my own thing, and well, he implied that he was ready to retire, so.
Well, good for you, Gary.
Thanks.
And Mary.
Thank you.
Yeah. Excellent.
Well, I make a motion to approve this license as presented to us for the, it is a class-one, class-one license for, to Harrison Diesel, to transfer to Harrison Diesel Solutions, LLC, for Lindsay Road, Hatfield, Mass.
One second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck to you. Welcome, welcome to Hatfield. Not that you're new here, but we're really happy, and congrats to you, too. Enjoy your retirement.
We're keeping all, we're keeping all the employees and growing, because we couldn't ask for this more.
Even better. That's really great, really great.
Good luck. Hope you're successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wish you all the best.
Yes. Okay, I have got papers everywhere here. That was a good idea, Ed, to take that out of order.
Yeah, our hearing stuff too.
We're going to have to take some other things out of order, too, because topic three is a public hearing that has to take place right at 6:00 p.m. So Chief, it looks, or Jerry, you guys, I don't know, arm wrestle over who goes first?
I look further away.
Okay, we'll have Jerry come on up. So Jerry, you are looking for some pay rate changes?
For our two drivers.
Okay.
So we're looking to increase Glenn Zigma from $1,694 to $1,794 an hour, and Steve Raff from $1,581 to $1,681.
Okay, and is that all within the confines of the budget we just passed?
Yep.
And the board is recommending an increase for the director as well.
Yes.
Yes. Just wanted to make sure, because that's in here.
And that's all within the confines of your line items?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
No, it's important that it's all within the confines of the budget that we passed.
Right, and it's just trying to bring the drivers up to pay rates that other Council on Aging's are at at this point.
Well, I mean, we, you know, we deal with this almost at every meeting, it seems, and we have another one later this evening where, you know, we're just, our pay rates are not competitive. And so if we want to retain, you know, attract and then retain our employees, we need to keep trying to incrementally, as the budget allows, you know, increase people so that, you know, they want to stay here.
And right now, I have a great crew, and since Laura Hummel came on as the program coordinator, it's been a big help to us. Yeah, so it's been, it's been good. We're busy. We have a lot that's coming up. I'm working on the next newsletter, which I have to submit on Friday. So we've got, you know, a health fair coming up, an art show, and we have a lot of things coming.
Great, I love the newsletter.
Thank you.
I read it cover to cover every time. I love it.
And we have a barbecue that's going to come up that we're going to have over at Prospect Meadow Farms.
Oh, what a great idea.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, oh, nice. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended COA board to increase pay rates for van drivers and directors.
One second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
You know what? Did I not? Oh, you guys all need to sign that. I've been lax in my signature. Hello, Eileen.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
We're just signing some things here. We got a couple minutes before we can actually start with you anyway. Okay, are those all signed? Nope, Ed, and Ed. Do you think we can take yours up quickly?
I think so.
Okay, come on up. Thank you.
So very similar to Jerry is, you know, competitive wages. I recently found out what an employee up at a sandwich shop out on West Street was making, so that was kind of the real final push for this. I did present the budget during budget season to try to give pay raises to make us competitive for recruiting and retention. It ultimately did not get to the towns' folks, so this was a way to do it within the budget. So we'll be moving some money from fire training, fire response, and ambulance on-call, which is the overnight-on-call, to bring the two full-time firefighter EMT basics up 50 cents an hour, and then bring the full-time medic position. Ultimately, it'll end up moving up to nine, it'll move up 97 cents to 26.50. It's been, the job has been posted since two days after the override vote. I had one applicant, and then they took another job for $5.50 more an hour to do the exact same job. So one way to try to make it a little bit more attractive is to see if by bringing the pay up a little bit could help, and that puts us on par with the bulk of the rest of EMS in the area. Most places are starting just a paramedic at 24 to 26, and basics from 23 to 27 now. So we're, this is just a slight increase, and it's all within the budget that was approved at town meeting.
Yeah, it's a very slight increase as well within the budget, aye.
If it's within the budget, it is within the budget, okay.
Yep.
I'm just reading these forms. They read.
So the, I believe the two that you might be looking at now are for two new employees that are currently starting, so those would have the rates as-is.
Okay.
If you're seeing.
Yeah, it's got, so it's got, but it's got the, there's the training, but it doesn't really say on here, one is the hourly and one is the training. That should probably just be, unless I'm reading it wrong.
On the cover letter.
On the cover letter, it does, but on the form, it just has.
Yeah, the two different pay rates are on the form because it's kind of the generic form.
Right. You might want to maybe put, well, I mean, I guess they'll see the cover letter in the treasurer's office, but.
Yeah, and the account numbers are on the sheet, so the account number at the top.
These are the, these are the only two you want voted on tonight.
Those are, those don't require a vote. Those are two employees that I've appointed to the department as per diem.
I just have to sign? We just sign?
Or just sign those, yes.
Acknowledging them and their pay rates.
Okay.
And then the letter, the longer the letter.
So that's Mannheim and Backman.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we've got this right.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to increase.
Well, I don't think these need a vote.
Those do not need a vote, no.
These don't need a vote.
Can we, can I talk before?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's such a slight pay raise. Do you really think that that's the solution? Is there more to it than we're, do you think there's more to this than the pay that people aren't coming here?
I mean, right now, there's, there is a shortage of paramedics, and almost every department in Pioneer Valley is essentially hiring or will be hiring within the next two to six months.
Right.
I know that. I know there's vacancies currently, and there's vacancies that are coming. This was one step to try to make it a little bit more enticing, and it's, it's so small because I'm doing it within the budget. It's the, it's the best I can do with the dollars that I have to try to make it a little bit more enticing, pulling somebody that maybe currently is working private EMS but really has a drive to want to be firefighter somewhere, and then if we're getting it a little bit closer to their, what they already make, or a little bit more, it might draw them in. I can't guarantee that it will because everybody else is looking for folks, but if we can get somebody, it will, it'll help the cause, I think, and make it a little bit better for them.
So you don't think it's anything?
We have been getting people, but they're not staying, so that sort of, is sort of scary, I guess.
Yeah, the full-time medic, besides the one internal candidate that was interested because he had lost his previous job, that was the only person in seven weeks that had expressed interest. So this was my next hope, was to see if maybe that would garner a little bit more discussion.
You were interrupted.
Oh, I, I think this is a nice idea, but I think there's more to it than this, than just the money, and I'd like to see what else is going on, why people aren't coming here, more than that money. It's got to be something else.
I mean, I got to be honest, I know, you know, you were in the field for a long time. People, people know what was going on for the last year, you know, looking at our fire and ambulance, that we were not really sure how things were going to progress, you know, into the future, and I think that held off, because I know a couple people I spoke to, they said they would be interested in coming, but they were hesitant because at the time it was, well, it might only be for three months. So it made a difference previously, and I think right now, a lot of it has to do with just everybody else is hiring and they're paying.
But to be honest, the reason all of that is happening is because we had staffing shortages. So that, to say that because we're looking at this through the lens of a consultant is kind of, I mean, that problem existed, that's why we needed the consultant.
Well, no, the, because prior to the override vote, we didn't know if funding was going to continue past June 30th. So up until the last 11 days, when the new fiscal year started, there was people that, they're like, well, I'm not going to apply because I may not even, I may apply, I might work one shift, and then they would be gone if the funding hadn't been approved in May. So that made a difference, and those two individuals that are up there, they were two that were holding out until after we had gotten the override passed, so that was a step.
So it was the override not looking at the services?
Yeah, it was funding.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
On July 1st ultimately was, was part of the holdup of people coming here because they weren't sure if it was going to continue after that. So that held up some of the hiring on a few folks, and then this is, you know, just, just the next step, is we're still leaving shifts open on the medics because not enough of the per diems can work, and that was all part of the original.
Are you getting toned or is it because it's 6:00 p.m.?
Tone test.
Okay. Okay, so it was, you just needed those two tonight? You just needed that tonight?
Yes, the proposal in front of you.
Yes, I'm okay with those two guys, two people, but as far as the pay raise, I'd like to, I'm not for this until we've seen the consultant study.
Not for the increasing those pay?
Right.
The, the other part of it? I mean, it is all kind of part of all of it, but.
So, yeah, I'd just like to see the study before we start throwing money at this, because I don't know that that's the problem, for sure. I mean, we can guess that's the problem, or maybe it's just a shortage. Maybe there's just not enough people.
So we're looking at, there's, you've got two different things here, right? Am I, you've got the people that we just.
Those, those were only in front of you for signatures tonight.
Okay, but then this is, this is different. This is, okay, I just want to, because the amounts are similar, and I.
Yep, those were just for signatures for the new employee pay rates.
Where is the study now?
The study is moving right along.
It's with the editor.
It is with the editor. I had conversation with Chief Stotan, Houghton, excuse me, Houghton, last week, just sort of reviewing some of.
The technical.
Technical things, you know, not necessarily content, but more technical things, and he was supposed to get it off to the editor, I think, after our conversation, so.
He sent me an email Friday and said that he expected to have it back the middle of this week.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's moving right along. I would expect to see it. I would expect to see it before our next meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. So, that's where that's at. Okay, so you want to hold off on this portion of it? Greg?
I would like to.
That's, that's fair. I mean, we can, if you, if you think it's important to see the study first, then I could hold off to next meeting.
We're paying to have a study, and this is kind of a guess, it seems.
Yep.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with holding off. You're okay with?
It's your choice. I don't think anything with the study will get done until the next fiscal year, I would assume, once we see the report.
That's fair, too. I mean, we, you know, we just authorized some of these for the COA, and I guess I would be fine with approving them. It does seem like we, you, we're continually giving, you know, increases or, you know, a little more money to the department, but, you know, we're also needing to cover shifts, and we're needing to retain employees, so.
So this is within the budget. It's not additional funds. It would be within the current.
Right, so basically, it's the same thing we just approved with Jerry, just in a different department. So I don't have a problem with doing it as long as these different numbers get adjusted in the report. Is there, well, it won't matter because it doesn't affect the lines or.
Correct. It's only for two, total of three employees, and only the full-time. None of the per diems would see this change in their hourly.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with doing it. I get your point. It's a, you know, I don't know how you feel about it, Ed.
I could go either way, yes. I mean, we have already done Jerry, we've done the DPW, we've done the police department. It is a small amount of money on one hand, and it's, it's not a lot of money. It's only for a couple employees, and even the study comes in, the study might come in and, and suggest that we should be increasing it higher. I don't know.
That's true.
Well, the study isn't really designed to, to make recommendations about salaries. It's really to look at the options we have for providing service.
All right.
But, you know, a big component of the study is comparing, you know, what, what we would be paying to do all of our services here or if we, you know, outsourced or contracted with another, another community.
On the other hand, it'd be fair, too, because in the past, we've supported increasing some of the wages for our employees. So if we said no to this one, then.
I, I, I actually think we, we should do this. I mean, we're, the whole point is retaining people. You know, I, I get your point, but this, the study is going to make some recommendations, but it's still going to be a while, right? Before, because ultimately townspeople will have to decide how we proceed from here. And I would assume probably at next annual town meeting. So you're talking about, if this, if these can be funded and they're small, you know, within the budget, then, well, one is almost a dollar an hour, one is 50 cents. But you're saying that was. It kind of says two things. So the budget request brought forward wasn't enough, but then you're saying you have enough in the budget to fund these?
The budget request that I put in was for additional raises across the board to bring all positions up to a competitive wage for everybody that was working. This is only for the three full-time staff. And not what I was originally proposing. It's a lower, lower amount per hour per person.
I mean, it, it's the same issue and that is retention. So I, I really don't have a problem with, with doing it if it's within the budget, just like we did with, with Jerry. I think it's kind of separate from the, the consultant issue. It is, it really and truly is separate. If it's not affecting the bottom line that Chief Houghton has reviewed in the consultant.
I'll just add that the board and the SLIC board and the finance committee will need the next, this next year before developing the budget to talk about plans for funding the fire department.
Right, because we're going to have, we would have to ask, no matter what.
Right.
Well, to do it in-house, there's, we're going to have to ask for potentially an override, yeah.
Yeah, the board will have going.
So.
Well, since, since we've done it for the others, I think it's fair we do it for, for the fire department, the more you think about it. I, I do understand what Greg is saying. He makes a good point and it is sort of separate. So, I mean, if you want to make a motion, then I would, I would.
I, I will make a motion to approve these as requested by Chief Flaherty. I think that it, you know, will help us in the meantime as all of this other work is, is happening.
And I'll second that because we, we sometimes will always agree to disagree on things. So it's, that's what makes it a good board.
That's okay. Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded and made further discussion. Hi, we'll be right with you.
Bill.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you want to vote?
Bill will be with you shortly.
Nay. Did you catch that, Karen? That's okay. We're, we're just wrapping up. So you're good. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so this is Attorney.
Bill Solomon.
Bill Solomon. Welcome, Attorney Solomon. Eileen, come on up to the hot seat.
Okay, Bill.
Well, maybe even over there because he can get you on camera over there. Welcome to Hatfield, Eileen.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Attorney Solomon, can you hear us?
I did, yes, thank you.
Sure. So we're, we're starting this, this is an actual posted hearing. We're starting it just a few minutes late. It's a public hearing. This is to consider and vote on our Comcast license agreement, which is something we do every 10 years?
Yes.
Every 10 years?
That's right, yeah.
And so there's been quite a lot of work done on this over many, many months, maybe even almost a year?
It has been a year.
Two years. But who's counting? And so this really has to do with the agreement between the town and Comcast and some provisions in it for things that the, the town gets. And I, I will acknowledge John Novak's work around this issue and in getting this contract. And Marlene, to this point. So did either of you, John, this could be your cameo. Good step on the, you could come to this side of the. You're, you're all good.
We're all settled.
You're all settled. Is there anything sort of noteworthy in this that, that might be of interest to townspeople? I know that there's, you know, money for the, you know, for this, for being able to broadcast the, the equipment and some, your time and that sort of thing. Anything else you want to?
Well, the, the town will be receiving $69,000 in capital support, which will be paid over three installments. So, you know, that, that'll be very helpful. And as we know, the school would like to see the cable, cable TV studio control room moved out of the school. So costs that will be incurred as a result of relocating the studio will certainly help those expenses.
Yeah, that's great. And we, we, you know, we appreciate Comcast's, you know, investment in the community and, and what it means. You know, a lot of people watch this, watch these meetings and, and other meetings of, of town boards, school committee, planning board. So it's a nice, nice resource to have and it's nice that we have Comcast's support to maintain the studio and.
We'd also like to secure high definition, which we spent a lot of time discussing that, so.
For the meetings? For our meetings?
Oh, no, for television, for subscribers.
Right.
So Eileen, just for, I believe right now, all customers pretty much have standard, correct?
Right, the channel, the PEG channels are in standard definition.
Definition.
That's how they relate.
Right. So this, this new license will give all subscribers high definition.
As long as they have the right equipment. So everybody will be able to get it. They may have to switch out their box.
Yes, they may have to switch out equipment.
And in exchange, so we'll be taking back the SD channel, providing the HD, providing this in HD. And that'll be within two years, but it could be sooner depending on the studio.
But I think we already have that at our house, don't we?
You have HD, but the PEG channels are carried in standard definition.
Okay.
So that's something new.
I see.
And then the town will also be, will also be providing the Northampton PEG channel.
PEG meaning public educational government.
One of their channels will be broadcast up here as well.
So this, this channel that we're on will be high def?
Yes.
Oh, Lord have mercy. That is. That is not good news for me. I don't, okay. All right, great. I mean, I think that that's just, I, I think it's important for townspeople to understand what we're talking about when we talk about this, this licensing agreement.
I, I can say a few words if you like, if you can hear me.
Of course. Of course. Go ahead, Attorney Solomon.
Thank you. I, I have two licenses that are signing tonight. I would say I spent three times as much time on the Hatfield license. But the other license is where I had served as town council for 30 years. So I thought I should probably go in person, otherwise I'd be there. But as long as you don't tell them, more and more time and effort here at the Hat, in Hatfield. And a bunch of challenges and I want to thank Eileen for, I was, you know, a great representative for Comcast, a top negotiator, a lot of fair negotiator for listening to the town's needs and having Comcast beat those reasonable needs. So just give me a few thoughts. One is the PEG operating support that comes in four quarterly payments. As it's stated, public education government access annual support made in four payments. That percentage of the company's gross revenues, which is a broad full definition of their gross revenues, doesn't have any arbitrary exclusions, is increasing from 4.5% to 4.75%. The maximum allowed under federal law is 5%, but when you're at 5%, there's a set off. So 4.75 is pretty close and it's a big balance. That, that'll mean additional funding, you know, of course, it all depends on cable company's revenues. But the goodness is that Comcast is an excellent cable company and a good competitor. And it's doing well, notwithstanding, you know, transition that's occurring in, in video. So that will increase its percentage, four and a half percent to 4.75%. As Marlene said, the capital support is $69,000 and that's paid in three installments. Upfront, 2024 and then 2025. That's important because the town has capital needs right away. Particularly as you move your studio from the Smith Academy, likely to the Town Hall, there'll be expenses and getting paid that money over 10 years would not be, would not work in the same way that getting paid over three years. Comcast understood that and we created a three-year payment schedule. It mentioned the HD channel, high-definition PEG. And one of the interesting things is, if you had asked me, you know, 10, 12 years ago, if you had more than one channel, which was the likely channel that a town would pick as the PEG cha, as the high, the high-definition channel, I would have thought in those towns that have multiple channels, and you have two, which we'll talk about, that's the public channel. Because it has, you know, more outdoor events, things of interest in color. But it turns out that most towns that have more than one channel, larger towns, that they select usually the government channel to be the high-definition channel. And that's because when you put electronically or otherwise, you put documents, it could be a budget document, a planning document. When you, when that gets on a cable cast and you're in HD, you know, most people can, can read it, they can see it. So that you can fully participate in a more, in a more complete way through HD because you can see what other people are looking at, at the meeting. And so you're, that, I'm with you, I'm at the point in time where I certainly, you know, want to screen out HD for myself, but for the documents, that's very, very helpful. The, the, keeping the, the company's right to reclaim their channel. In their perfect world, they would have had the right to reclaim the, the standard channel, standard definition channel at the same time they provided high definition, which under the license is 24 months. But town representatives felt strongly that they wanted a, a period of time before that standard definition channel went away because there are issues with respect to viewing HD. And so our thanks to Eileen again and Comcast, notwithstanding what their preference would be of agreeing to what we think is very fair, that when the town waits 24 months for high definition, Comcast can reclaim that standard definition channel for 24 months. You know, and maybe at that point, they, I decided it doesn't really matter and they don't reclaim it. So you have your, your PEG channel on HD and SD. The, the very complex question in, in Hatfield was the cable casting. But as you know, the likelihood is the, the, and the studio will move to the Town Hall. And, and that what's going to happen is that Comcast is going to connect the Town Hall to the Smith Academy by fiber. And that from, from the Smith Academy, they pick up, that they now do the, the signal back to their head end. So that'll allow for a clear picture and good sound. So no one will have an issue hearing or seeing what happens at, at, at meetings. And that incentivizes other boards, which might not want to be televised all the time, but for very special public information meetings, gives them a chance to get the message out in the, in the hybrid post-COVID world. Finish up pretty quickly. I would, the license is very strong with respect to protecting the town's technical interests, financial interests. It's, it's, it's right-of-way interest and that's, that's important going forward. The line extension, extension policy stays the same. You have a good, a good line extension policy where your density requirement is 15, dwelling units per mile aerial and 25 underground. That's relatively low for Western Mass. So that means that, you know, if there are homes built that don't, don't afford that, there's a greater likelihood that they'll definitely connect the cable to internet. And let me just, and that's it. I, I just, in summary, it's a very strong financial license. With the exclusion of Amherst, maybe Northampton. I, I'd say there's no stronger financial, legal or policy cable license in Western Massachusetts. That's a tribute to the team you have working on this, us working together and Comcast coming to the table. So very pleased to recommend the license, a very, very strong license. Now, building on what you built on last time, working your way up from two and a half percent of gross revenues to four and a half, now to 4.75%. And proving, proving Comcast programming, so they're a better competitor and your public has, you know, really greater awareness of what's going on in the town. You have to answer some questions, but I just want to thank everyone on, on the town team, John, Marlene, who, you know, he spoke an awful lot over the two years to, to get this done. And again, thank Eileen for her excellent work.
Great. That was a great explanation. So we appreciate it. So I guess, if, do you have anything else or do we want to go ahead and make a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I actually have three questions for you. One is, I'm just confirming, it's $69,000 for 10 years?
Correct, it's three payments.
Correct. And the second question, under page two, cable cast, cable casting. My other question is, then we pay $21,500 for the PEG access channel that we move to Town Hall and the fiber? Is that the way I'm reading this or can you explain that to me?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's, that's right. So the, the capital is the smaller number. The larger number is the, is the 4.75% of gross revenues each year paid quarterly. That'll be, you know, far more than the capital. Capital's helpful. And that's right, the, the move, including the fiber connection. But what the goodness is, is that after that's built, that Comcast is fully responsible for both the fiber and for the electronics, the encoders. They have to maintain the encoders, they need to, as soon as they need to repair them, they need to replace if needed. So everything is, is, is on Comcast and it should be because they're a cable company and you're not. So once they, they, they build that, it's up to them to maintain that and they will. And if they don't, we would call them on it. So that, that is, that's correct.
Okay. And, and the last, the last question is, this contract is sort of based on, with the intent that everything's moved from Smith Academy to Memorial Town Hall, the way I read the contract. Because it says if, if it doesn't get moved, then they pay us $2,500 within a year's time, like November to December of 2024. I just want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm reading, that's all.
Right.
We're not, there's no payment from us if we don't move. It just built, built it in that, the timeframe within a certain, within, we'd have 120 days notice.
Right.
When it's going to be moved. If it's not moved by that date, for whatever reason, we still agree to move it to the new location. But that cost could change depending on where it's moved to. So the, the cost is, the $19,000, it's $19,000 for the move, for the, that's for the fiber and to move it. And it's $2,500 to upgrade to HD PEG. So that's where you get the $21,500.
So right now, that cost is locked in to the end of December 2024, provided it comes to Memorial Town Hall.
Right, right.
And if it went someplace else, there may be a change in cost.
There could be, correct, depending on the cost. It sounds like for all intents and purposes, it will be coming here, though, from all our discussions, so.
I can't imagine where else it would go.
It would be the cost. So the cost is, I mean, obviously it could be greater, it could be, it could be less, it could be less, theory.
Yeah.
Depending on, you know, depending where you would, you would be located.
Okay. Did you have another question? You said you have three?
No, that was it. I just wanted to make sure that's the way I understand what I read.
Greg, anything?
I have nothing. That's great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we need to actually make this motion that we had here in the package?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agreement.
Well, I think we have to read the actual.
Read the motion.
Oh, doesn't, oh, sorry.
Yeah, here.
All right, all right.
Senator Marlene, you can ask again if there's anyone in the public who would like to comment.
Sure. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment? There's nobody in the room. But we can say we asked.
Yeah.
Karen, you're good?
Yeah. You're a subscriber, right?
Yes.
I hereby move that the board, as Cable Television Licensing Issuing Authority, vote as follows: To grant the subject Cable Television Renewal License, with a license renewal term July 11, 2023, till July 10, 2033, to Comcast of Massachusetts, Two Incorporated Comcast. All terms and conditions contained in the renewal license have been agreed by Comcast. Comcast by, and through its authorized representatives, shall execute this renewal license agreement as set out by the signature page on the renewal license.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. This, that, that represents a lot of work, a lot of back and forth.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you, Attorney Solomon, and we appreciate Comcast, and certainly John and Marlene for their efforts around this. And I guess Eileen, we'll see you in 10 years.
Yes.
Or maybe more like eight.
Yeah, probably like eight.
More like eight years.
Might get the signature pages.
Yes.
That's possible.
So there's three of them here, three, three.
So we need to sign those so that Eileen can take. We'll, we'll get these done quickly.
Are you going to just take the signature pages, though?
Yeah, it's all I need.
Just, okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much, Marlene. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you. Okay. That one needs you. This one needs you.
It's red.
One needs, needs Ed, yep.
Yep. This one is done.
Okay. Greg, would you like to pass that to me?
This one?
Yep. Let's take the signature pages out.
Everybody looks so summery. I know. This one's done. No, Daryl's not going to be here. This one's done, too. We are just moving right along here, Finance Committee. Do you, Ed, do you want to deal with the transfers while they're here? And then go back to the?
That's fine.
Set, are it with you, Greg?
Okay. Want to take five?
If you need to. You need to.
Yeah, just for five.
Okay. Could we take a quick break?
They're going to tell somebody.
Okay, great. We are back after just a quick break. And we're going to continue to take things somewhat out of order because we're joined by our colleagues from the Finance Committee to do some year-end transfers. So we figured we'd do that quickly while everybody was here. So we have a short list of transfers that are needed. Do you want me to read through them? Or it looks like $6,376 for accounting services, $4,133.29 for vocational tuition, $2,800 for motor pool expenses, $2,000 for streetlights, $19,400 for town-building electricity, $5,070 for accounting software, $11,304 for town-wide fuel, $3,750 for, I assume that's Medicare Town Match? And $12,400 for insurance. So that would be a total year-end transfer of $67,233.29.
Can I just also add something? For informational purposes? So the amount for the vocational tuition and transportation, that's just a portion of the overall total deficit. We covered about, I think, what was that, $8,000 at the town meeting? And so we, we met with our DOR rep a few weeks ago and consulted with him about, you know, taking up year-end transfers and the schools. Because when you look at the statute, it appears that you cannot transfer to the school. You can transfer to, you can't transfer out. They clarified that, yeah. Okay, I understand that.
But the school didn't need any transfers or at the end of the school year?
No, we, no, it was just the vocational tuition. They moved some monies within their lines, and they do that with the accountant.
So those, I mean, that's a whole stuff that's pretty straightforward. And I think, for the most part, self-explanatory, not, nothing really, you know, glaringly concerning in there. Did you have any questions or comments, Ed?
No. I mean, we've anticipated some of the increases, most of the items in here.
It's not unexpected to see electricity and fuel.
Yeah, those are not surprises.
No. Greg, any questions?
No. All right. I'm the new guy here, but I've seen you guys work on TV. You guys do a really, really hard, awesome job. So thanks.
Thank you.
You're going to, you're going to be part of the fun next year.
All right. Yeah, I better butter them up, then.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a, it was a big year. It was a really big, this was a big job. And.
Yeah, it was.
I still feel a little scarred from it, but we got through it. So, okay. I mean, I have no questions. Did anybody want to?
I'd like to make a motion that we transfer as indicated. I don't even know what to call this. I don't have to move, I don't have to move through all these, do I?
Well, no, I just read them publicly.
Say as presented, yeah.
As presented on this sheet.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
My me.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to sign, Marlene?
Yes, we, we'll vote it, and then we'll hand it down to you. So we need to also make a vote to do that.
Make a motion to approve all these increases as shown on the sheet.
Transfers.
Transfers.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's really a short list, actually.
Yeah.
If you think about it, I mean, considering, like, things cost more.
Yeah.
Could be worse, right?
Oh, oh, yes.
And then it will, you'll hand it down, and they'll sign it. If only everything we did could be so quick and easy. Okay. So while they're just taking care of signing that, the other issue under the discussion with the Finance Committee is discussion around this opportunity to join Franklin County Technical School District as a member town?
Yeah, so we were contacted, and I have talked with the superintendent's office at the Franklin County Regional School District. And I also consulted with our school superintendent. And we have more students enrolled at Smith Vocational. So I've reached out to Smith Vocational, just haven't heard back from them. And I know, you know, summertime.
I mean, what is this about? To give, to give kids the opportunity to choose between the two?
No, no. So, you know, the tuition, the tuition and transportation amount that we budget for.
Right.
So we could get that at a discounted rate if the town was a member of the district. So I am exploring what that involves.
So you mean, instead of sending our students to Smith, they'd go to Franklin?
No, they, they can go wherever they want to go. But that, that fee that we pay in the budget, that's based on the number of students enrolled. But it could be less. The amount, we could potentially pay less in tuition and transportation if you're a member of the district.
Provided they go to.
Your kids go to Smith, you're a member of the Franklin County District?
We have two students at Franklin Vocational current. Well, we did for this past school year. But we have, there's more students enrolled at Smith Vocational.
Well, yeah, of course. I guess I'm just don't completely understand this.
So Michael was suggesting that we, you know, explore Smith Vocational as well. So right now, that tuition and transportation cost for FY '23 was for students enrolled at Smith Vocational and at the Franklin Regional Vocational School.
What am I missing?
That amount could be less.
If?
If Hatfield is a member of the district, the school district.
Is there a cost to be a member?
Of the Franklin and of the, because Northampton also has a, a membership. So they both have memberships. So I assumed we were already a member because we, we pay. No, we're not.
Has there always been this membership option?
I was not, I was not aware of it.
So do you pay for the membership?
Until we received this letter.
Do you pay for that?
You would still pay the annual cost based on the students enrolled.
But, so what's, what's the obligations of being a member?
That's what I'm trying to find out from Northampton.
Like, why would you, what, something, I'm missing something? Like, there seems to be a piece I'm missing.
I feel there should be something else. You know, is there an additional cost? No, you would just be, you would be budgeting for the students to go there. It would just be at a reduced cost.
Has the school committee even looked at this or provided a recommendation?
Well, that's what I had asked the school superintendent. He said it's entirely up to the Select Board.
I'd like input from the school committee. To see what their thoughts are.
I just don't, something about this just doesn't make it. Am I missing something? Do you?
Yeah, it seemed unusual. That's why I called. I had a number of questions for them.
I mean, how could they possibly take a discounted rate if it's not offset somehow?
That's what they explained to me.
Why not?
It's just a discounted rate. After all this time, yeah.
Yeah, well, Smith, I don't know. Because it, Smith is not really a vocational district.
But they're part of the Franklin County.
No, Smith is not part of Franklin County.
They're two separate vocational schools.
Smith is in Hampshire County.
It's also, yeah, it's also not truly a vocational district, like, in the same way that Franklin is. There's no one, there's no one elected that I'm aware of.
According to the school.
Smith Oak has trustees.
And they're elected from Hatfield, East Hampton?
Only from Northampton.
Right. And all the others, all the other vocational schools are just, do not operate that way. In Franklin, I am sure that there are people either elected at large or people elected from the communities that are in the district.
So I don't know that they're the school committee, they're just the trustees.
Right. Smith Oak, because there's a will.
It's very different. Smith Oak is different because of.
It's not really a regional vocational district in the same sense that all the other regional vocational districts in the state are. It operates differently. It's unique. And, and my understanding is that we pay tuition cost at Smith Vocational, which does not include capital.
It does not include capital.
It does not.
So the, Smith Vocational has to rely on the city of Northampton for its capital.
Which is dramatically more expensive at a vocational school than it is at a regular high school. So I don't know how you could, I don't know. I mean, I think we already are getting a discounted rate there, probably, at some level. You know, I mean, there is no, I don't know what the other rate would be, but it'd be interesting. Franklin might be a different story because it's, because I don't know, you know, I don't know how, you'd have to really look at how are those students counted for state aid purposes.
This is the letter that the town received.
That might be the advantage to them, is that it changes, you know, there's, there's different kinds of enrollments, right? Like, in terms of your number of students, how you count the number of students. I mean, I've seen it at Smith Academy, right? So there's like the number of students that you're responsible for. And then there's the number of students that actually go there. And those are two different numbers. So people like, who are school choicing, for example, out, count in some numbers but not in others. So I don't know how it works when you're tuitioning in. You know, as opposed to a student who is a member of the district going there. There might be advantages to them to have that happening.
Yeah, so we need a little more.
I just wanted to share this with both the Select Board and the Finance Committee. So when the town received the letter, I reached out to Michael Wood, the school superintendent. He said it is between the town and the vocational school. He said, but he was aware that Northampton offers the same, same district.
So I guess we need a little more information about it.
So I have had conversations with Franklin Vocational School. And as I said, I've, I've contacted North, Smith Vocational.
I mean, both are excellent educational opportunities. And I guess I didn't know that we could send to Franklin County?
Yeah, they're saying right here, you have a voice in the governance of our district. So you would be a member, you know?
Yeah, you become a member. You get, and then the tuition, transportation cost is at a discounted rate.
I think we have more questions than answers. I think we need to get more information. And I think the school committee should be looking at this, too, making a recommendation. I mean, this is just.
Yeah, for sure.
Right, this is school.
I wonder if you can be a member of more than one.
That's a good question.
Yeah, can we be members of both?
I mean, you can tuition people wherever you want.
Yeah.
But we can't be members of the, of Smith anyway, because of the way the charter's set up.
Right. I don't think you can be, I don't know, honestly. But I don't think that you can be a member of two different regional school districts.
Even as vocational? Because that's different.
Well, if you're just tuitioning anyone, anywhere they want to go, then what is, what does it mean to be a member? I guess that would be my question. If you're just saying anyone can go anywhere they want.
Being part of a regional school district is very different than, than being part of a vocational district. The regional district is providing the primary education to your community. So obviously, you can't be part of two regional districts. But vocational education is, is another, is just a different option for students to choose.
Yeah, I don't know how it works now, but it used to work that, I haven't looked at it in a while. But I think it used to work that you didn't, weren't actually free to go to any vocational school that you want.
That's what I thought. That's what I was surprised that we.
They don't offer something that you want to do at the school where you're a member of a district.
I, I didn't, I thought that Smith Vocational was our vocational option for our students. I did not know that you could opt over to Franklin County.
I think you can opt anywhere you want. I mean.
But with vocational education, though, we're obligated to provide the transportation, right?
Yes.
So now we're obligated to provide transportation up to Turner's Falls? We must be, if we have two students up there. I mean, that's, yeah. There's, we, we need to learn a lot more, so it's, it's.
Just to open up discussions and bring it to your attention.
It's nice to open it up because I think it gives everyone a sense of the questions we have.
And as we know, all the schools are competing for kids, so, I mean.
Yep. That is a fact.
Maybe I'll look back, too, because there was a situation with East Hampton and the Educational Collaborative, the Vocational Collaborative.
Right.
Because East Hampton, again, I haven't checked in a few years, but I wouldn't imagine it changed much. Last time I checked, East Hampton has more kids at Smith Vocational than Northampton does. And, or very close to. And they have no say in the governance of the district. So there was, maybe, maybe 10 years ago now, there was, they were involved somehow with the Educational Collaborative in East Hampton. So.
They, who's they?
East Hampton was talking about sending kids there. So there's, you do have to offer a vocational option, but I don't think you have to offer every vocational option, like, every school.
Right. Interesting.
Right, because what would stop somebody from saying, well, I want to go to Tri-County Vocational School in Franklin? You know?
Right.
Or any, or the one on the North Shore?
Right.
You know, Essex Aggie, any of the vocational schools in the state.
Okay, well.
Now we know.
Now, now we know we don't know.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, we will, I'm sure revisit that. That was all I, we had on the agenda for the finance committee. Got anything else?
The status of the study through the fire department?
Wait, it's, it's gone to, like, final editing. It's getting there, we're getting there.
Good. Just looking for an update.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it actually a little bit before you arrived, that, you know, even though we'll have the study, it would probably be, you know, next budget season and town meeting, and then potentially even a ballot question to, you know, make that decision. So it, it's not anything that's going to happen right away, but having the information as we're starting the budget process, which we'll be starting very soon. Very soon is going to be good, so.
Not next month.
Not next month? Well, thanks for coming, finance committee. We appreciate it. Have a great summer. I don't see all of you.
That's one of our quicker meetings, I guess, with you guys.
I know. Okay, so let's see if we can get ourselves kind of back on track here. So topic five is to discuss the new requirements for the animal control officer, which, if I understand correctly, aren't really new requirements. We've just, they're somewhat new.
Right, but they're, they're coming down now hard. There is training that is required, and upon completing the training, you're, you're a certified animal control officer.
So, I mean, just to backtrack a little bit, so we, obviously Hatfield has had the privilege of having Scott Pomeroy as our, you know, very capable-
For a very long time.
Animal control officer. And for him to remain, he would have to go through all of this training. It's not necessarily something Scott wants to do because he's planning to, I think, retire from this. So the issue was, is there any kind of way we could waive this in the meantime? And I'm not sure.
So there may be an option?
Okay.
We don't know. Again, exploring it.
Right.
But I understand that Franklin County Sheriff's Department has an animal control division, and it's for members of Franklin County. So I have contacted the gentleman that is head of the animal control department and discussed with him whether they may consider, you know, taking on that service for Hatfield.
So it doesn't appear that there's an option to keep Scott on?
No, there is not an option to keep him on.
What a shame, that, that just seems just ridiculous.
White Franklin and not Northampton?
There, from what I know, and, and I was told that there, Northampton doesn't appear that there is any other regional animal control.
They probably handle just their own where-
That provides a service, yeah. But this is through the Franklin County Sheriff's Department that provides this.
There's a lot more regional services that come out of Franklin County for obvious reasons. The communities are much more rural, and so it makes sense. So there's been other times we've accessed, I, I know, but I, nothing's coming to mind right now, that we've accessed some Franklin County regional services where Northampton is just, you know, probably got its hands full with just its department. But I think the shame of it is that we have this really capable, you know, who, who has just given incredible service to the town. I think he, you know, I bumped into him, talked to him recently. I think it's, you know, he's looking for like a year and a half, two years, to just remain as the animal control officer here for us, which would of course be terrific. And we, we can't make that work because of these new regulations. Did we talk to Senator Comerford's office at all about it?
No, I have not talked to Senator Comerford about it.
Because that, you know, that might be an option. You know, this is, this is coming down legislatively, and I'm just wondering if there is any way we could just-
Certainly worth discussing with them.
Somehow, you know, get a waiver or something like that until, until the time that Scott is, you know, ready to, to stop doing it. Because we're, we're very capably served by him right now. So what is the, you know, I don't know what the intent was behind this legislation.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's been problems with other-
Was it to require particular certifications, which I understand, I mean, I get that.
Right.
But we know that Scott is, you know, more than qualified. He would just have to go through this training that, you know-
He would be required as-
And I think there's a cost associated in time, and he has, you know, another job, and, so it's another example of where legislation is handed down. It doesn't take small towns and our, you know, the way that we staff things sometimes and our limited capabilities to pay for things. We have people that are wearing more than one hat, or they're doing this part-time, and it just doesn't make sense. It's just another example of that happening at the state level, and it's frustrating. So maybe a call would-
I'll be glad to have a call with Senator Comerford's office.
Yeah, I mean, if you give Elena a call and see if there's anything, you know, that a, that a small community can do. I mean, I don't know if, I haven't seen the legislation, I don't know if there's, I mean, I'm sure if there were different levels of community, you know, that Scott would know that. Because I, I know Scott's looked into this. But he's just done such a good job.
Yeah, the communication is coming from the State Department. I want to say it's out of the Department of Agriculture, but I, yeah. I want to say it's out of the Department of Agriculture for some reason.
Okay. Well, I think it bears looking into-
But I'll update the board at our next meeting.
I mean, and we also have to look into the, you know, the option of going with something like a regional service out of Franklin County, just because we don't know if we're going to be able to make something work for keeping Scott on for-
Well, the representative I talked to had said that, you know, he'd have to have a discussion with the Sheriff's-
Right, of course.
So he will get back to me at a later date.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that the, there'd be a larger cost associated with that.
There is, there's a, an annual fee.
Right, and I don't know that Scott, Scott's not making a big, no.
No, no, very minimal stipend.
Yeah, so-
For the amount of work and what he has to do.
Yeah, for, for, it's, it's not a, it's, you know, not a, not a, not a good job, not a great job. He does a great job at it.
Another law to make the towns pay more money for no reason, it's just, it's, it's sad.
Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't take into consideration small-town-
It does, no.
You know, limitations, so. Okay. All set on that one, Marlene?
Yes.
Phil, come on up. Okay, surplus property. There's several vehicles here that are, you're looking to have declared surplus?
Yes, so first I want to thank Karen for doing all the work that she did. You know, she reached out and, you know, we worked quite well together about putting this list together and getting all the information for you. So there's the fire department's truck, the COAVN, and a DPW truck that's in here.
So I just want to, just for the sake of people at home, we're talking about a 2008 Ford F-350 crew cab from the fire department.
Correct.
A 2013 Ford van, that's an E-350 that was from the Council on Aging.
Yes.
I'm assuming that had like a lift, right? A wheelchair lift?
It could have. I don't know if that was the one that did or didn't.
And then the, a 2016 Ford Expedition from the DPW. So these are older vehicles.
Correct. So after they're declared surplus, we will put it on municipal bid to put out a bid for, you know, for-
It goes onto where?
Municipal bid.
Yeah, okay. So we don't do it just locally here in town? Because we used to do vehicle bids that were just all local here, but now we put it out on the-
Put it out, yep.
Okay. So townspeople who might be interested in those, it would be municipal?
Municipal, correct.
Okay. And I would assume if anyone has any questions, they could call Town Hall and get that information?
Yes, yes.
So do you need an actual vote to declare those surplus?
Yes. Select board needs to vote to declare.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to declare the following three vehicles we have in front of us as surplus, which would be the 2008 Ford F-350 cab crew from the fire chief, the E-350 white vehicle identification with, for the, it's a 2013 Ford van from the COAVN, the 2016 Ford Expedition from the DPW. That's presented in our handouts here. Or do you need a more specific?
No, I think that's fine. Did you second it?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Easy enough. Route 5 and 10.
So a little update we just received today, their contractor's schedule that was passed on to our engineers, comprehensive environmental. So it looks like the de-watering is going to start August 21st, and it's going to run into October 27th. So the de-watering is every 200 feet, they put in the system, de-water it, lay the pipe, and then pick that up and move the next 200 feet. So it looks like, according to their schedule, that they're going to start in front of House 35 and go to House 44 from August 21st through September 15th.
And so a couple of things. I mean, this is, I can't believe they're starting this late. I thought we were talking about this getting going in April. That's just, so what does that do to the timeline for getting this done before winter?
To next year.
Or are we talking about this project going into another construction season?
This is what we're talking about at this point.
Going into another construction season?
Yes.
Correct.
What is that, we're good grant-wise?
Well, it, we had reported to Mass Works for the previous quarter that we would be spending down money in this last quarter. And as of yesterday, it appeared we wouldn't be spending anything. I received an invoice today from the engineer for $31,000. So that is, will be charged to the grant.
But what was it for? What was the $31,000 for? They haven't done anything.
For construction admin, administration work, construction administration work.
I mean, it's, it's disappointing because they sat here in March, and they said, well, we can't start till the middle of April, but we have to put some stuff together, it looks like middle of May. And we got the money, and we got the funding last year, based on what they told us they needed. They had all winter to figure this out. They haven't provided to us a good reason why it's waiting till middle of August, no. I mean-
What is the reason?
There is no reason. I've, I've been emailing them back and forth over the last few weeks, and, I mean, it's just sad.
I, I have a couple of thoughts. I've made my feelings known about this. And I, I guess, first of all, we need to communicate to the residents, this new projected timeline. And, you know, that means that this is going to go into another construction season for them. I, I don't think they're going to be happy, I can't say I blame them. It means that puts off, right? Putting, making that sewer line live for them through another winter, yes?
Can I bring up one thing? I mean, since we're talking about it, since this is going to be aggravating for the residents, I've been looking at, there is right now in our regulations, it's a $1,000 cost to tie into the sewer. So I'm thinking, not at this moment, but I, I want the board to consider, maybe we should waiver that fee to the residents of the $1,000 connection, since all the connections are being put in anyways, and it was done under mass fundings. And maybe that's a good way to say, hey, we understand your frustration, we'll waive the $1,000 connection fee, or use some ARPA funds to pay for the connection fees. So I, I'm thinking about that, because it's, it's really upsetting that they're doing this project. On the other hand, the bright side might be, with all the water, the water might be lower in August, but I don't know if that's true or not, because you have groundwater, but still-
Well, last year we had a terrible drought and they had the problem.
Still, they should have told us that, you know, they're going to, because we're under the impression it's going to be done this year.
Well, this is their projection, you know? That's not saying that what happens if they run into issues again. We don't know that. We don't know that. We just hope that the de-watering system that they're going to install this time is going to work. And I mean, Ed's been very vocal to them, and I've been very vocal to the engineer and to the contractor that this isn't acceptable to go into another construction season. Get the crews out there, put the main in, and run the laterals off that main, so we can wrap this up.
Now, they were claiming-
I mean, my frustration level is through the roof, and it was a long time ago.
They're, they're claiming that, in the letter I saw, that the pumping station would be in by another crew on August 1st, and then they would be able to actually have that running this year with some connections tied into it, but it wouldn't be completed this year. That was, but so far, I don't know what to believe on what I'm reading, because we're, they were supposed to have a schedule here Monday, which was yesterday, my understanding.
They have it several weeks ago.
Yeah.
So there's no clauses in the contract about completion dates?
I don't think there is. The only thing that I am frustrated about is people are ready to go to hook in, including the manufacturing company up the street.
Yeah, because people-
Which was the, you know, really the spark that lit this project to begin with.
Right, because people expected that they would be able to do that, because they were going to be finishing up, you know, in the summer.
I'm hoping that, that they get the main in and get the laterals off the street, so we can wrap up with that and-
Have you had any contact directly with Gila, or are you going just through CEI?
No, just with the project coordinator, which is CEI.
You have to go through the-
He's in charge of the project.
We can't contact Gila her directly, we're contracted with them.
I have talked to Ryan numerous times. You know, he has, you know, they're blaming each other, you know? The contractor can't get the help, you know? CEI didn't have the drawings ready for the pump station. Well, everything's in place, I mean, and everything should have been in place. And maybe not the pump station because of, between the litigation and what happened at town meeting.
I can understand the pump station, but the rest of the, they could have been working on.
Right. You know, I just hope that, you know, if it's August 21st, that the de-watering starts on August 21st, and the equipment's there to lay some pipe. I mean, they're saying it's going to take three weeks to lay through to 200 feet of pipe. Seems like pretty extreme time that that's slow going.
Well, I told, I told the engineer, I said, don't come back next year for more money because you got to tell us that we already signed this change order, are we locked into this price? And he says, yes, you are locked into that price, so, but I, they don't, better not come back next year. Well, the, you know, the fuel costs more, this costs more, that's, it's, this is on them. Anyways.
There's a lot that should be on them.
Uh, yeah. So can we, just to clarify again, we're, in terms of the grant, we're-
Well, we, we're not spending down the amount that we had said we would in, in this fiscal year, this quarter.
What does that? I mean, we need to communicate with them, right?
Right, and I am, will be in communication with them. I'm waiting for the engineer to take a look at the draft report that I sent him the other day and get back to me.
And then we need to communicate with the residents out there.
Yes, we do.
Well, we were going to, once they got the schedule in. We're waiting for that schedule, which they said they were supposed to give us for the last two weeks, right?
He sent that, the engineer sent it later this afternoon. He said, you know, hopefully, these are the dates, if there's any changes, he said, hopefully for the better. And I said, anything less than an improvement will not be acceptable.
I could, I would have said it differently, but that's okay. That's a nice way of putting it, okay.
I say we just unleash Ed. Okay, well, I'm, it's about done.
I mean, I will be in communication with, again, pushing them, like I do every week, to start earlier. I mean, there's absolutely no reason that they should be waiting till the middle or end of August now. I mean, you know, you know, DOT is going to put the timeline on when they can pave, so.
When does DOT stop on the winter? When does DOT stop on the winter?
He thinks in November.
November, right.
You know, but if you start getting bad weather, they'll shut you right down if they can't get the blacktop, so.
For a snowstorm.
Okay. Well, thank you, Phil. Did you have anything else?
I don't.
Okay.
Well, anyways, maybe for the next meeting, we could discuss that, whether you guys also feel that we waiver the connection fee.
I like that idea. I mean...
Because of the frustration they're dealing with out there.
Is that, is that, is that something we could possibly consider?
Well, I think personally, my two cents is if you're going to waive a fee, you have to waive it for a certain amount of time.
Right. I mean, once...
I think you shouldn't just waive a fee and then say, "Well, I'm not going to hook up, because my septic is still good." And 10 years down the road, they're not going to pay.
Oh, no, they would have to hook up within a certain timeframe.
Right. You know, you could waive the fee maybe for a couple of years or whatever.
Once the project's finished, I was thinking of two years after that, and that's it.
Yep.
Yeah, I do think that's a great suggestion, a good faith effort on the town's part to, you know, acknowledge that this has been, you know, bothersome, inconvenient.
Because now, it's going to cost the residents a little bit more next year, because everything goes up a couple percent each year. Or maybe they could get locked into...
Right, because they have, they have other expenses related to the tie-in, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
They have to pay for this, wherever the stub is on their property.
Right.
To wherever they're going to hook in from the house, and then they have to abandon the septic system, so.
I'd like, I'd like to answer that to the residents. What I understand is there's been some residents looking for a price, but, because we can't, we can't, we're not going to get the contractor for your house. And each house is going to be different, because you don't know the distance from the connection to the house. And then, in the house, you don't know, and if anything has to be brought up to code. So, the owners are going to need to get their plumber, maybe a couple owners get together and talk to one plumber and get a better price that way.
Well, and then you also have like the...
This is going to be up to the owners to...
The people that do the excavating and stuff outside and everything.
Exactly.
You know, I have talked to many residents down there and told them that they should all get together and try to get one contractor to do the connections, because they don't have the equipment on site.
Right.
You know, at least get some of them together as a group.
But they can't get any contractor, because none of the connections are in place by their houses.
They don't have timeframes. Right, so, okay.
Phil, I communicated to you and Michael by email about a resident asking if the very high piles of dirt that are placed on town property behind homes on West Street, because when it gets windy, that dust is, you know, it blows to the back of their house. Some people have screen houses or decks and like to use their backyard. Is there a way to level, that the contractor can level those down?
I'll it all away, because I thought they were still using some of it. But I will contact Ryan Gilher and tell him that's another concern of mine.
Well, I thought that the engineer would have talked to Ryan about that. I haven't seen anything.
We'll talk to him.
Okay. Well, hopefully, there'll be much better news at our next meeting.
I hope that they're going to start.
That they're, they'll be there working.
Correct.
I look every day. Nothing going on. I drive down there every morning. I mean, I know they're not going to be there, because we've had this information. Okay, Phil, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Marlene, next it's your, your items. And the first one is a Chapter 61, Chapter Land 61B.
Right. We're revisiting that request. That was the Belden Family Trust. I received communication from the Conservation Commission and Planning Board. And as stated at a prior meeting, when we discussed this, that property, that parcel of land is landlocked. Neither the Conservation Commission or Planning Board has an interest in seeing the town acquire the land.
The map seems kind of incomplete, because, I mean, it doesn't really give you perspective. I mean, I see Depot Road here.
Mm-hmm.
But, but it is, it's clearly landlocked.
Yes.
And, and it is...
Just a reminder, so it's going to remain in 61B. It's just, they're, they're selling the land.
Two and a Butter, who is not a family member, correct?
Correct.
So, it is, it's not arms-length, so...
Right.
And it's only $150 the back, because you have to, do you still have to pay the rollback taxes if it's staying in 61B? No, that's if it comes out.
You're right. You do not pay the rollback taxes if it stays in 61B.
If it's staying in Chapter 61B, so...
So, that $150 lien factor, I'm not sure what that is. I'd have to ask the assessor's office.
Is there a possibility, maybe there's an unpaid bill on it? If Butter agrees to pay the $150 lien factor?
That could be, yes, an amount that, yeah, I'm wondering if that's an amount that has been leaned.
It's maybe a bill that's, okay. But the town has, so, Planning Board, Conservation Commission have no interest in it. Phil, we have no interest in this. Okay. I have no problem with it.
So, we'll send out a letter notifying the Belden Family Trust of the town does not wish to exercise its option to...
Well, we would need to take a formal vote, correct, to not exercise our right of first refusal?
If you want, right, you could still vote that you...
Do not want to exercise our right?
Correct.
We should probably do that. I'll make a motion that we do not exercise our right of first refusal on this parcel, as identified in the letter from Sarah Winesick and Mr. Belden.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now, we have a request from our historical museum curator for an event.
Yes, on October 14th, yes. They're setting up a, what is it, a trolley?
It's just a, it's just a display of trolley-related items.
Items, correct.
Years, years ago, there was a trolley that went through here.
Yeah. Right. So, there was a route from Hatfield through Waitley and Deerfield and into Greenfield.
Yeah.
And so, they want yard signs displayed along the route.
That's what they're requesting.
From Friday, the 13th, through Saturday, and then they'll remove them Saturday evening, just to show people where the trolley went. I mean, do we even need to give them permission to do this? I mean, they're putting signs, people put, people put signs on town property. We don't give them permission, right?
No.
Typically, people have, have asked, you know, permission to place signs on town property.
But I didn't, we have a big debate at town meeting, that there's, we don't have any provision to stop people from doing that. And is it towns, is it town property or yards along this route?
Well, you know, I was just thinking, I wonder if this is just maybe people they're going to reach out to.
It sounds like it's got to be private property.
It very well could be.
I mean, I'm sure the signs will appear, will be in the right of way, right? But I don't, I mean, I don't see why we would, like, we don't give permissions to put up the luminarium signs. We don't give permission to put up the bonfire signs. We don't give anything else.
That's true.
I mean, I guess it's, it's interesting information to have, and be nice to put this maybe on our website, for, so townspeople know what this is about and that it's coming. But I don't think we need to vote anything like that.
Well, the board doesn't have a problem with it anyway, so we'll just, yeah, let them know that they can do that.
Well, very nice little project that they're doing.
It's fun.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting.
Okay, a request to carry over unused vacation time. I have no problem with this as presented. We've granted some other ones, too. Sometimes, you know, people can present us with a reason of why they weren't able to use all their time, and we grant a occasional carryover. So, I have no problem with this. Anybody?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I'm okay with this.
Okay. Do we need to actually vote that? Do we vote the other carryovers?
No, we did.
We did.
Okay. I was trying to think. Jeez, I don't recall.
I'll make a motion that we allow Patty Cotton to carry over some vacation time as requested.
One second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Look at that. We did it all, except the executive session.
And there's also a request from the town administrator to carry over vacation time.
Oh, did I see that?
It's in the same memo.
Oh, it's in the same memo?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion also that we approve the carryover of vacation time for Marlene Mashansky as requested.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. And then, we just, this letter is just for information, right, from Cher?
It is. But because the board voted to appoint her, you know, and as she states in her letter, she's very grateful for the appointment.
So, do we vote to rescind the appointment?
So, you'd have to vote to rescind the appointment.
So, Cher, we, we voted to appoint Cher Nicholas to the Historical Commission, but she's, she's writing a book, and I think she feels like the time isn't necessarily right. And the book is about Hatfield, and so she feels like it's, it's not the right time, you know, which is, which is great, fine for her, but, you know, she would've been great, maybe at some point.
So, anybody interested in...
Anybody interested in being on the Historical Commission can be in touch, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I would make a motion that we vote to rescind the appointment of Cher Nicholas to the Historical Commission at her request.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're not going through any of the old business, right? We're just going to get into...
I have a quick update regarding the police chief's request to purchase a new cruiser. The SLIC Board asks that we find out the cost to insure a new vehicle. For FY '23, the rate for FY '23, it would have cost $829 to insure the vehicle. At the time we made the request, they did not have the rates available for FY '24.
But not a ton of money.
No.
Okay. I appreciate you looking into that.
I know the board had wanted to take that under consideration and discuss it at a later time.
I know. I see also under old business, and I know we're not going to take it up officially, but I did, I have spent some time reviewing this drafted social media policy, Marlene.
Yes.
So, maybe over the next couple of weeks, we could set up a time to go through that, and I can let you know some of my thoughts on that.
And the tree warden position, since the last board meeting, which you discussed the position, so the board was notified that, that legislation that was approved creating the DPW includes a tree warden. So, the tree warden, the role and responsibility of the tree warden falls under the Department of Public Works.
And does it fall specifically to the DPW director?
No, but it is the responsibility of the DPW director.
So, we can't appoint another one?
Correct.
It's statutory?
Correct.
Right, okay. I did speak with someone from the Historical Commission today who would like to have more discussion with the tree warden around removals and more, actually not necessarily removals, but replacements.
Yeah. I received a phone call today. I'll be sending an email to you, Phil.
Yeah, so, I, right, I asked her to give you a call, so I pretty much assumed she'd follow up. Okay.
Just one question. Under old business, it was asked, did the school's solar systems, how it's doing and stuff, did we ever get an update or report on the solar system at Smith Academy?
No, I have not received one.
Is it online?
It's working. It's active.
It's been online.
Yeah, maybe back in February. Okay. I think it became active in February.
It's been 36 months.
Maybe, maybe even earlier than that.
I don't know if there's any other grants on solar. We got a couple other spots in town that would be ideal locations, if it's economical to the town, if it's worth money to the town. But anyways, that's another story for another time.
Well, they are looking at the elementary school, right, Phil?
They have the request.
Right.
Yeah, they are considering adding solar panels to the elementary school.
Okay, so, then, we are ready to go into executive session, correct?
Oh, yes, I forgot about that.
And we will not be returning to open session, so I'll take a motion as such?
I'll take a motion to go into Mass Generalized Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public party, and the chair so declares. And we will not be returning into regular session.
You always say Jaworski Aye.
Jaworski Aye.
Zinal Aye.
Magnan Aye.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.